In five, four, two, one.
All right, well, welcome to Pearland City Hall. As we kick off our city council meeting tonight, we have a couple of groups that we'd like to have some special recognition for. A-List, which is a youth organization here in our community and doing tremendous work throughout our community on a lot of different projects, a lot of man-hours. It is incredible to see the list of accomplishments that this, uh, this group of young people have done. So I'd like if at, at least a couple of representatives could come up for the presentation and then we're going to bring the whole group up for a picture. And I'd like our mayor pro temp to, uh, to present this.
Thank you, Mayor. So I've personally witnessed what A-List has done for our community, so I'm, I'm very thankful for you assisting with this certificate of recognition this evening. We've got Andy, Andy here. I love the Andy Gu and Andy Jiang. And so, uh, on behalf of the mayor and city council, we wanted to present this certificate of recognition. Whose volunteer impact touches many areas and organizations here in Pearland that make our city the special place that our residents are proud to call home. From April 2020 to August 2021, the Alliance of Youth Leaders in the United States, A-List Organization in Pearland, has donated over 1,400 volunteer hours through various events, resulting in the contribution of nearly $80,000 in real money and volunteer hours to our community. The impact that this youth has on serving the Pearland community is tremendous. Andy Gu and Andy Jiang of the A-List Pearland Leadership Team have gone above and beyond to ensure that this impactful youth organization has made a real tangible impact in the Pearland community through serving the needs of various community groups. So I just wanted to present this to you and thank you so much for your contributions.
Uh, do the same thing with this one, Joe. We'll be able to splice this out so they can get a copy of this here in just a second. Um, as we, uh, finish up, what a, what a wonderful job these, these youth have done. We kind of turn to a different moment, okay? Uh, this month is Suicide Awareness Month. So we have our folks from Counseling Connections here. I'm going to present a proclamation in recognition of Awareness Month for that. No doubt, uh, we could talk to people throughout this room and anybody listening online and they, they've seen or have had the effects of someone that they know or a loved one, uh, that has taken their own life. And as y'all know, working in the mental health arena, uh, they're all avoidable. They're all avoidable. And, uh, when somebody is crying for help, help. Uh, understand the signs, know about it and, and those types of things, um, because 100% of these lives are, are preventable. So with that, whereas September is known globally as Suicide Prevention Month, this proclamation recognizes death by suicide occurs among all age groups and across all socioeconomic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds. And whereas according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34 in the U.S. Whereas in Texas, 3,891 individuals died by suicide in 2019 and more than 40,000, 47,500 deaths across the United States and an estimated 1.38 million suicide attempts. And whereas each suicide directly impacts family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, and community members, and whereas suicide is preventable, preventable, everyone has a role to play to save lives and create healthy and strong individual families and communities. Now therefore, I, Kevin Cole, by the power vested in me as the mayor of Pearland, do hereby proclaim the month of September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Pearland and encourage all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Pearland to commit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to prevent, to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Signed today, September 13th, 2021. And I want y'all to speak a little bit about this and, and what people can do to, uh, maybe seek help. There are tons of prevention hotlines and those types of things, and we want to promote those this much, this month as much as possible. And I'll say this, uh, no doubt, the last 18 months have, uh, we, during this pandemic, have created yet another potential pandemic, uh, one around suicide with, uh, mental health concerns. So Dawn, would you, uh, speak a little bit?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you to, uh, the council members and to you, Mayor Cole, for recognizing this. And as we are increasing anxiety with the pandemic and the unknown of what is still to come, with the changes that are happening, um, in our schools and around our nation and actually around the world, stress is on the rise. And so, um, it's important for us to ask our friends and our family members how they're doing. Suicide is most definitely preventable. And so, uh, if we all come together and work, um, to ask those questions that are important and to pay attention, I think we make a huge impact and we reduce the rate of deaths by suicide. Thank you.
Shannon, you want to say anything?
All I want to say is that, um, suicide doesn't just affect the people that are immediately involved, it affects people for generations. And in my family, um, there was a death by suicide by my grandmother before I was born. And, um, it severely affected my mother, it severely affected the way she raised me. And I was taught to believe that it was something to be ashamed of. Um, and, you know, it took until my adult years and a lot of help to understand that, um, it's preventable and the people that are going to make a difference are the people in the closest circle to that person. So if you sense that a friend or a family member is experiencing some kind of stress and you might believe that they might hurt themselves, ask, because no one has ever given anybody the idea of, of death by suicide by asking. They've already thought about it and you may save that person's life. So all of you and everyone you know can make a difference. So thanks. Thank you, Mayor Cole.
Well, let's, uh, take a picture on this.
You're good to go, Mayor.
All right, everybody in place, so we'll get started here. All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to, uh, to City Hall and call this regular city council meeting, uh, for Monday, September 13th, 2021 at 6:30, uh, to order. Uh, if you will, I'm going to have, I'm going to lead us in a invocation. We'll have pledge, uh, both, both of our flags by Councilmember Carbon, so if you'll rise. Heavenly Father, we just want to, uh, stop for just a moment and ask for your guidance and your direction, uh, Father, and for your protection tonight. Father, just lead and guide, uh, each and every one of us as we deliberate the, the business of the city. Father, be, uh, with our city, with our area, with our county, uh, everybody, uh, that's in the path of Tropical Storm Nicholas tonight, uh, just ask for your protection, uh, and covering, uh, over the next, uh, 24 to 36 hours as the storm moves through. Father, as always, we have first responders that will be out in the midst of the storm, taking care of people, uh, taking care of property, and we just ask that you will, uh, cover them and protect them, uh, not only this evening, but for the duration of this storm. Father, we thank you tonight, we give you all the glory and praise for it. In Jesus' name we pray.
If y'all join me in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag.
Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay. There we go. I was fixing that. All right. Under general comments. Okay. So moving forward in our agenda, uh, appreciate y'all coming out tonight. We are, uh, as we get ready for citizens' comments, take a quick liberty, well, let's go ahead and move through citizens' comments. I believe we have one. So Mayor Pro Temp, would you introduce, uh, oh, before we do, certify that we do have a full quorum tonight, all members present, uh, in the, um, in the chamber.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have one speaker this evening. Um, if you would, it's Jimmy Kelly. If you would be, please make your way to the podium. State your name and address for the record and please limit your comments to three minutes. We really appreciate you being here with us this evening.
We on, we live?
Yeah, there we go.
Jimmy Kelly, 3607 Dorothy Lane, 77581. Good evening. Thank you for having us. Um, I know you guys can't respond to anything that I'm going to say tonight, but eventually I would like to get some answers and statements, uh, about this on the record. Uh, Luke, the signature validation process, uh, that didn't matter, but what really does matter is that your signature did appear four times. Um, simple question, straightforward, um, why was it there four times? Um, you knew the rules and I have to ask, why did you break them? Uh, the definition of a question is this, it's a sentence worded to elicit information. Since a question is seeking information, it can't by its definition be misinformation. Alex, on August 23rd, uh, you said there was misinformation about the RCI zone change, but that's not true. Uh, Luke, Adrian, you guys tossed that word around the same night. Uh, there were questions about RCI's request and their involvement in the ballot drive, and there were questions about the company in Luke's name. You don't get to call a question misinformation just because you don't like the question or the person asking that question. It's a question, it cannot be misinformation on its own. Luke, you talked to Darren and had an hour to answer Jeff's question about that company at the 23rd meeting. And, uh, when you said you don't own or operate an Airbnb in Pearland, you should have just left it at that. Uh, you were so interested in playing the victim that you didn't realize that no one would know what was at that address, had you not said it yourself. So, for making that public, that's, that's on you. Uh, Adrian, Alex, uh, you both went on record, uh, the 23rd during the 51% discussion stating that you want people to be able to vote. And I'm glad that council members who got their seats by voting approve of voting. I, I really do, I like that. But you two and Luke did support an initiative that was fueled by some bad information, not all of it, but some of it was. And questions regarding that information don't mean that anyone is trying to stop residents from voting. Uh, I think we all want residents to be informed of what they would actually be voting for. And I didn't even get involved in that until the signatures were practically a done deal anyway. You all campaigned for positions that are subject to more scrutiny than the average citizen comes under, but some of you choose to deflect and distract instead of answering the questions. If you can't handle the scrutiny or answer those questions, uh, I think you should reconsider those shares. Uh, I'm, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm thinking there might be a little less scrutiny if more questions receive direct and timely answers. Thank you.
Um, Mayor, I'm going to take a personal point of privilege since we're, I was name-checked. Um, the reality situation is, is what is out there in the public space is out there in the public space, but being directly accused of supporting strip clubs, um, specifically by a user who for the majority of this area, like 99% is not viable, um, was misinformation then stands to be misinformation. Um, that user has since come forward and has said publicly, they will not be building a strip club in the location. Um, I can't be more forthright that, um, when addressing those kind of items.
Excuse me, Mayor.
I know, I hear you. Give me just a minute. Uh, it's really unfair to then go and paint us as being four strip clubs. That is, that by definition misinformation. So thank you for letting me take a personal point of privilege, uh, to address being name-checked. Thank you.
Let's move on. Um, all right, with council concurrence because of the impending storms tonight, um, I would like to, I guess, play a little bit of, uh, gymnastics with our agenda. That's okay. Uh, there's some priorities that are in our, in our agenda for tonight. Uh, first, obviously is our consent agenda. We've got, uh, quite a bit of, of items on there. If there's no items to be removed from consent agenda, then that's one vote and a lot of, of our agenda, uh, moves forward. And then second, want to go straight to our budget. Uh, so new business number three, four, five, and six, which are all, uh, budget-related items and fees, and then come back to the public hearing. And that, out of that order, that way, if and when we've got a weather alert that we need to get out and go home, we've taken care of some of our number one priorities, uh, on the business side tonight. So it, it, I don't know that I hear anybody objecting to that. That would be a route to, to move forward. Okay. With that, um, what, um, move, yeah.
You also had talked previously about, uh, announcing postponement of seven and eight.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Thank you. Um, on H, okay. So on, on, uh, new business items, seven and eight, those are both the UV related, uh, items that were on here. We have already, uh, moved those to a previous, they'll be on the 27th agenda. Uh, again, just trying to lighten this agenda for tonight in light of the storm. We, we already alerted UV for that as well, and I believe, uh, email went out to, uh, the ad hoc committee as well. Uh, yeah, thank you for bringing that up, Blake. Um, consent agenda, uh, I have had item H, uh, by the mayor pro temp to pull, uh, because he has to abstain on that one. Uh, are there any other items to pull on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Uh, Mr. Orlando, could you present the rest of the consent agenda items, A through J, minus H?
Sure, Mayor. Consideration, possible action on the consent agenda items, A through J, with the exception of H, so moved.
We have a motion, a second. Uh, Madam, uh, Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbon?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero.
Is H time-sensitive with the contract?
Need to do it by the 30th, so we could hold to the 27th, it wouldn't be a problem. Correct me if I'm wrong, Grant, yeah.
Okay, so with no concurrence, let's just throw H on there. We have one abstention. I don't know that there's any major issues there. Mr. Carbon, could you present H real quick?
Consideration, possible action, resolution R 2021 dash 201, so moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second.
Mayor, just for the record, just so it is, yes, I am recusing.
Okay. Don't go far. Right there, yes, man. Back report on that.
Uh, this is a series, uh, we did embark on a, uh, new contract with our solid waste taller. Uh, this is some cleanup language now that we've, uh, all reviewed it a little bit closer, uh, clarifying some of the, uh, steps and, uh, language for the contract enforcement. Nothing to add.
Any other questions, comments, concerns by council? Seeing none. Mayor, uh, Madam Secretary, call for that vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbon?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero.
Is H time-sensitive with the contract?
Need to do it by the 30th, so we could hold to the 27th, it wouldn't be a problem. Correct me if I'm wrong, Grant, yeah.
Okay, so with no concurrence, let's just throw H on there. We have one abstention. I don't know that there's any major issues there. Mr. Carbon, could you present H real quick?
Consideration, possible action, resolution R 2021 dash 201, so moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second.
Mayor, just for the record, just so it is, yes, I am recusing.
Okay. Don't go far. Right there, yes, man. Back report on that.
Uh, this is a series, uh, we did embark on a, uh, new contract with our solid waste taller. Uh, this is some cleanup language now that we've, uh, all reviewed it a little bit closer, uh, clarifying some of the, uh, steps and, uh, language for the contract enforcement. Nothing to add.
Any other questions, comments, concerns by council? Seeing none. Mayor, uh, Madam Secretary, call for that vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbon?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero.
All right, thank you for that. Now we're going to actually move to new business item number three. Uh, let the mayor pro temp get in his seat. Um, would you present new business three?
Me. Yes, sir. Consideration, possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1605, so moved.
Second. We have motion, a second. Staff report?
Hey, Mayor, this is, uh, the first of two readings on our budget for the upcoming fiscal year beginning October 1. Uh, council is obviously well aware of this. I, I do think the matter deserves and will go through, uh, beef overview for the record, um, and highlighting, uh, changes that have been made. Uh, in that spirit, I do want to thank council and, and note that, uh, this year in particular, at least for myself and staff, appreciate the direction and, uh, actions that council has taken through their deliberations. Uh, I think about some of the, uh, discussions, the clear direction you've given us, which we've met on, uh, a couple of things. One is, uh, maintaining the tax rate as recommended, uh, which is lower than the current and lower than the no new revenue. Also, council, uh, asked at the last meeting, we reduced the recommended necessary, uh, water and sewer rates to, uh, uh, around 5% from the, uh, initial 9% that we identified. Another one is, uh, council asked us to go back and bridge further the transition in the class and comp study, uh, from not only getting to 100% of the market, uh, for positions, but also to add about a million dollars for a transition to this, uh, step plan that we've, uh, uh, been, uh, fortunate to put in, and that'll be for non-exempt individuals. Um, and the transition, uh, we've, with this million, we've been able to, uh, bridge some of that gap, uh, this year and year one already, uh, for recognition of tenure, years of experience. And council otherwise has, uh, kept the package, um, as presented, uh, obviously with lots of questions, uh, things that are additionally for employees and, uh, for the betterment of our organization in terms of the, uh, sick buyback and position, uh, bilingual pay, uh, so those, uh, and many other things, uh, maintained intact. So, uh, Mr. Roche will go through, uh, the PowerPoint, but again, highlighting just what's changed and for you. Eric?
Thank you, City Manager Pearson. Uh, I will be sure to point out any new information, uh, but in the interest of the weather, I'm going to move fairly quickly, more quickly than I normally would. Of course, at the end, if there's questions, I'd be happy to take them. Um, so this is the first reading. We'll, we'll have one more reading on the 27th and then we will be set for next year's budget. Uh, starting off with the general fund, our main pool of money from taxpayer dollars. Big picture, we have a balanced budget. Our annual operating revenue is, even with our operating costs, our fund balances are above even the increased 25% minimum. That policy will be as, only requires one reading, so you will see that on the 27th that officially changes it from 16% to 25%. Uh, and again, uh, the trend continues that we are investing in our people this year through comp and class. Uh, that is the largest item, you know, funding-wise in, in our budget this year. Big picture-wise, uh, when you compare Pearland to other communities, you know, we, we tend to have a, a bit of a leaner organization. Those communities in Gray don't have a fire department. Um, officially, they're, they're volunteer fire departments. Uh, and our FTE growth has tracked the population growth, uh, about the same. The, initially, when the budget was sent to the budget office, we had 61 positions requested by department. Tonight, the general fund is showing 6.5 new positions. Uh, the changes in red reflect the, uh, changes that we have made tonight in response to city council. So you can see the police patrol position has had its hiring delayed, that, and the cost savings reflected there. You can also see the GIS analysts and GIS tech have had, uh, their start dates delayed and the senior office assistant has been removed from the budget. This was, these are all new proposed positions. Uh, there is a laundry list of cuts that were made to the budget in order to free up a little over a million dollars, uh, as city council requested, requested to be pushed into class and comp. Uh, these are a list of these cuts, I'm not going to go over these individually. And then, if our HR director is online, I'm going to throw it to her to, uh, give kind of an update on where we are at with comp and class now that we've freed up that money and redeployed it. Lorraine, are you available?
Yes, thank you, Eric, so much. Good evening, city council and all in attendance. Uh, based on feedback of allocating an additional 800,000 to a million dollars, we were able to increase the cap from 10% to 25%. Uh, with this change, um, it significantly reduced the number of employees impacted by the cap.
Hold on a second, Lorraine, let's go ahead and increase. Thank you. Go ahead, Lorraine.
All right. Um, it significantly reduced the number of employees impacted by the cap. So with transitioning to a 25% cap, um, it changed from a total 103 employees to 33 people, 33 employees, which is 4% of staff altogether. So, on the next slide, what we are proposing, um, is a two-year plan. Uh, within the first year, uh, we're allocating 3 billion dollars, and then with this second year, minimally, we'll be spending 1.9 million dollars, and that will enable us to catch up all of the individuals impacted by the cap and, um, at, in a 2% call of, um, our paid plans. So with that, um, we have to be deliberate when it comes down to investment, and, uh, with this change, we are able to incorporate, um, to 100% market within the second year. So, we, this is going to impact 22 as well as fiscal year 23 for 5.5 investment. Thank you.
And Lorraine, your, your voice broke up just a little bit there on the mic. I just want to reiterate, uh, with the 10% cap plan, we had 103 employees being capped. The 25% cap is what we're now at with that additional million dollars. Uh, it's about a threefold reduction in the number of employees affected, down to 33. Uh, general fund highlights, uh, police officer vehicle, animal shelter, there's a number of these. There are no new items here. Uh, this list reflects what is in the budget today. Um, if anything was removed, it is not on this list anymore. Uh, you can see there's some sustainable infrastructure items as well as welcoming community items as well, followed by some items for resilient finances and trusted government. A quick reminder, uh, the majority of our money comes from property taxes, sale taxes being our second largest revenue stream. Uh, property taxes are a nice, stable revenue source. Uh, sales taxes continue to grow for us. Really been proud of this, that we've been able to deliver, uh, true tax decreases over the last two years. Uh, we've come down 4.4 cents, uh, below the no new revenue rate, uh, as council has, you know, repeatedly directed us to come down on taxes. So, uh, this is staff and the city being responsive to, uh, that, those wishes. And then here's the general fund income statement where you can see FY '20 actuals versus, uh, the original budget, where we think we're going to end up in FY '21, the amended budget. And then the budget for next year there on the right, uh, under about 100 million in revenue, about 95 million dollars in expenditures, 4.5 in expenses, and you have about a $30,000 surplus. We use part of the surplus, which is around 220,000 previously, to help pay for comp and class. Moving on to the debt service fund, uh, debt continues to go down over time. This is, uh, debt backed by taxpayers, and you can see that the debt to our assessed valuation continues to decrease with or without the terrors there on the right. Our debt service fund summary here, again, very similar to what we just saw, 43 million dollars in revenues for FY '22, 44 million expense, expenditures, using a little bit of fund balance there, uh, and we will, we're planning on ending the year about 500,000 dollars over policy. A quick breakout of the tax rate, so when residents pay their property taxes, this is where that money goes. You can see it's about 7.11%. You can see it's about seven point six million dollars for mud rebates, thirty-six point eight for debt service, and thirty-one point eight for general fund operations, daily operations. Moving on the enterprise fund. Enterprise fund highlights, again, these reflect the changes. So for example, this used to be two message boards, now it's one message board. We also have some sustainable infrastructure investments the city is making. The staffing, uh, highlights page here reflects, uh, that we've removed the utility billing specialists, and these three positions have been delayed for their hiring to mid-year, and those costs incorporated to help pay for comp and class. And, uh, these cuts also contributed, uh, to helping us get down on the rate which council asked for. So, real quick, I wanted to just have these available as references. Here's the nine percent rate scenario. We've talked about this a few times. It's about, um, six dollars and sixty-five cents per month compared to where we're at now. Seven percent, seven percent rate scenario, you've seen this before. This is about five dollars and thirteen cents per month more, uh, for an average household, which is around, um, six thousand gallons of water a month. And then, um, the five percent rate scenario, this is the new information. Uh, five percent rate scenario brings in revenue of sixty point seven million dollars. Uh, this is a decrease of two million dollars compared to the nine percent scenario. To meet the requirements of a five percent rate scenario, we would need to remove three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That has been done from the budget. Uh, and we also, and if you remember back to that formula, we played with the denominator by delaying a CIP project and pushing out when we would issue that debt. Uh, that is part of that denominator, so that helps us meet that one point four zero ratio with the five percent scenario. I do want to stress, it was fairly hard and a, a good challenge for council to issue to staff to get us down here, uh, to five percent, but I'm happy to be here today with a, a, a five percent scenario. This would be about three dollars and sixty-seven cents, uh, increase for an average household per month. Here's a list of the reduction in expenditures, as well as, uh, a little bit more information on the debt issuances and what we're, uh, doing there. With the five percent rate scenario, uh, which is now the proposed budget, you can see the revenues over here are fifty-four million, you can see our expenditures of sixty-four million. Some of this are then transfers to the debt service fund for water. We end up with a bond coverage ratio of one point four zero, uh, and cash reserve ratio of fifty-five percent. Uh, so that concludes this presentation. I'll go back to City Manager Pearson.
Commissioner, council, I just note that council's had not only this PowerPoint, but, uh, several of the background memorandum, I think of particularly the class and comp that are explained in those. So, uh, it's not just this, uh, overview that you've had the benefit of, but also the detail behind that, which has brought us to tonight. And again, thank you for all your work to, uh, get us here. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Eric, uh, and also Larray for the presentations of that. I know last couple of weeks, a lot of work, uh, to get all that, uh, done, uh, and back into a packet so we can understand it, and hopefully, uh, have a good discussion tonight and, and, and get some direction on, on, on a vote. So, uh, with that, I want to turn it over to council for any com- uh, comments, uh, questions, concerns that you may have.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so if you go back to slide nine, real quick, first of all, thank you for all the work. Um, I know this is a big change over last week. So just so I understand, so, w- with this option, there's still thirty-three employees that are capped at the twenty-five year, um, or twenty-five percent cap. But for those individuals, they will be up to, I guess, a hundred percent of market plus a two percent COLA in next year's budget?
Uh, that is my understanding, is that we are gonna get them caught up to where they need to be next year. City Manager Pearson, do you have any color to add to that?
The question would be, uh, it wouldn't be limited to two percent, it's just that they wouldn't get the whole, uh, benefit of the tenure. So they would be moved up, but not necessarily as far as a, a, if money were no object, tenure adjustment for the person.
Right, but they'll be, they'll be adjusted next year.
That would be, yes, that's our recommendation, is to follow through on this for sure.
Okay. Now, thank you for putting that together, and I think that makes sense, and it doesn't kill the budget this year, but, but we're able to, uh, to, to look the folks in the eye that have been underpaid by so much and say, hey, we're, we're getting you part of the way here this year and, and the remainder next. Um, that's all I had for now.
Excuse me, Mayor. So, um, thank you very much, she is calling, yes. Let me get to work. Uh, kind of on the, um, uh, the same line, so, uh, again, just for clarification, so, we've got, um, we've got thirty-three employees, we can't catch up. The plan is for next year, in the budget, we're going to, uh, we're gonna catch them up as part of any other compensation or adjustment to compensation that we plan on making, uh, next year, a COLA which, um, uh, which may or may not be at two percent depending on our discretion. So, um, I guess, I, it's not just a question more as a, uh, instruction. Uh, let's make sure that we have, um, repeated reminders of that, that that's the plan. Um, and, um, I, I can judge this from my experience. We go through a budget, we go through a lot of discussion, uh, we have a lot of in- instruction, a lot of information thrown back. By the time we get back to February, uh, with all the meetings in between, it may have gotten lost. So, at, at very, at very least in February, let's get caught back up to what we've kind of, um, uh, agreed to, since there's nothing that we can do now that guarantees, uh, that in the future. Um, and then, you know, hopefully, we have, uh, the fiscal discipline next year to be able to move through. Um, on the enterprise fund, um, since we went through that as well, um, help me to better understand what it means when we're, uh, sorry, uh, we're bonding out the one point one million on the JHEC as opposed to cash. So in order to, in order to maintain that balance, um, we are holding, uh, uh, some cash that we intended to use for that project, and then we're gonna go to debt for that, uh, for the project that we intend, or the portion of the project we intend to pay cash for, correct?
Right, the reason this note is in there is because, uh, if you look at the math, you need to know that we are proposing one point one million for JHEC as debt instead of cash funding, so that you can see that, hey, we moved eighteen million out for Barry Rose, how come that is, you know, sixteen point nine million net? Well, it's the one point one, uh, in bonding for JHEC. What this does is it gives us a little bit more cash in the reserve, um, for the water, it's sewer fund, sorry, for the enterprise fund, uh, which helps us, uh, in the long run, kind of, uh, keep from having to spike up rates. It gives us a little more runway, um, to, to get things steady.
Yeah, I mean, I'll tell you personally, I don't, I don't like try, uh, transferring over the cash, um, to bond, but I think, you know, we gave you the direction to go to five percent. Uh, it looks like we're cutting pretty deeply already to just be able to do that. So, um, I'm comfortable with that, though I, I do think that, you know, we're, we're cutting a little bit further than what, like, we intended. I don't want to add any more debt, uh, than we already have. I know member, um, Owens and I have talked about that in the past, but, uh, I appreciate you giving the, uh, greater explanation. All right, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I have some, some comments. Eric, I've emailed you two slides, if you can bring those up real quick. Uh, first of all, I want to congratulate, uh, University of Houston, uh, for being, uh, allowed into the Big Twelve. Congratulations, I know it's a big achievement, and, uh, I know it'll be a lot more fun games right down the road. So, uh, congratulations from Perez, uh, looking forward to going to game.
It'd be nicer if we beat Tech in the opening game.
Would have been.
Appreciate you never running that in either, Mayor. We, we, we played like the cat with, cat with the ball, you know, just kind of back and forth there. No, I'm just kidding. It was a, it was a good, good fun.
Can I get a proposal, uh, this one over here? Yeah, there you go. So, uh, just really briefly, I, I don't want to take a, a ton of time, but this proposal is more or less, uh, development on proposal C, uh, previously sent out, uh, has been, uh, reviewed. A long story short, four point five million is identified across a variety of subject, uh, categories. These were non-personnel, um, some of them were miscellaneous training, medical, uh, other services, postage, variety of stuff. Um, and then as we scroll down, uh, that equaled one point six pennies, um, going to the third tranche there. A hundred and twenty-five thousand, uh, was taken, uh, as part of these reallocations of the million dollars into, uh, the general fund salaries. Um, so some of the recommendations were credible, um, but there's still about one point two eight, and I'm gonna call it affectionately at what I believe fluff. Those are two different, it's a term of art. Um, I think there's one point four nine pennies out there, uh, the rate is gonna be seventy point eight. Um, I really think we could get down into the sixty-nine range, uh, plus or minus this, because this is not coming off debt, it's coming off of M and O. Um, if we scroll down, uh, just a little bit, uh, that's my signature. Here's, uh, some of the categories, um, that we're discussing, uh, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, uh, the area in the bold around supplies and events. Uh, we did two hundred and twenty during twenty twenty. There's still room there, maybe we take half of that number. Uh, professional development and conferences, I know we had a cut, but there's probably still a delta between seven eighty-two and three eighty, um, the four hundred thousand. Uh, other contingencies, very, very interesting line item, a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, on and on. This adds up to one point two. That's, that's where I'm showing the work. And if you scroll down one more, uh, exhibit B, which is our last page, um, some of these items were incorporated in here, some of these were delayed staff members, some of these were members that were cut. I just, I'd like to advance to the, the city and the, the citizens. There is more room, uh, in this inflationary time, uh, to cut this budget. It's a hundred million dollars now, it's now about a hundred point three, uh, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand if you scroll up just a little bit, just a hair. Um, that two hundred and twenty-nine thousand FA annual budget surplus, we zeroed that out. So that's now revenues and expenses are equal, um, but there's still room in this budget to go below a hundred million dollar budget. Um, I would preface, uh, I could see six or seven hundred thousand we could reduce, and that would still be almost a penny. Um, and that would really help the citizens of our city.
I agree with what you're talking about on there. One of the things, you know, we really need to watch it on, on this and set the stage for the budget. Out of the hundred million, uh, and point three after that, seventy percent, uh, of that goes into salaries on there. So, and then, then you got thirty-six million that goes into debt service. Uh, I think, you know, after looking at the budget and what we've looked and done so far, I think, you know, that, uh, some of the positions that we're in here for full-time, I think that can be eliminated for this budget, because if you take, uh, a position and you don't fill into April, you're gonna pay half a month or half a year on that. And to me, kind of just, you know, if you can go that long without it, you don't need to, it doesn't need to be in the budget this time and look at it for the next budget year. And especially on those sides that we're looking at, you know, those are reoccurring expenses, uh, through there. It's not like it's a one-time expense and goes away, it's reoccurring through it. And we're gonna get in, in trouble here not too long from now, on the amount of money coming in that we have here and here, and how much we got going out, or it's a debt service.
Uh, member Owens, I, I want to give one alternate, I, I hate to interrupt, but, uh, will you pull up the second slide, Eric, that I sent? And if somebody doesn't want to cut budget, I know there's some members of the body that are saying, the budget is kind of where it is, right? I don't want to touch it much further than what it is. Um, this is FA two-two oh four, this is the emergency, uh, provision storage facility. Um, this is, you can see the budget here towards the bottom, uh, seventy-five thousand in design, five hundred in construction, one twenty-five in furniture, and then fifty thousand in contingencies. But this doesn't say what is the cost of the bottled water or the MREs, or are those gonna be recurring? How often do we replace an MRE? I, I didn't serve in the army or the navy or any of that, so I don't know how long those are viable. But if we do emergency provisions, we don't have the capability to emergency provision. You're supposed to have three days, you're supposed to depend on no power for three days of water and food. This doesn't cover that. The cost recurring isn't in here, but this is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of cash, that's essentially almost a penny right there. What I'm trying to make the argument is, there's, there's other places where we can get dollars to reduce the burden. The members of the council who say, well, I don't want to mess with this budget, Alex, I'm tired of messing with it. This was added on the CIP, and we push this to the mid-year, is what I'm saying. Can we, can we get a little more data on what it will cost to refurbish this every two or three years or replenish it? What goes bad, what doesn't? I don't have enough data here, but this is in the budget.
Member Kamkar, can I just ask staff real quickly to speak to that thing at the bottom, the potential ARPA grant?
That's what I was gonna ask. This isn't coming out of property tax dollars, folks.
Uh, right now, this item is being cash funded out of the general fund, so it is being funded with a mix of property taxes along with all the other general fund revenue. We looked into ARPA funding for this, uh, slight, right after this was adopted as the CIP. It is not ARPA eligible, we believe.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You know, when you get down through there and take a look at it, though, with the dollar amount that's going out on there, and, uh, you know, we're getting to the point now that if we run this for next year in twenty-three, it's gonna be more than seventy percent. It's probably gonna be seventy-three, seventy-four percent of the general fund. The general fund budget is the only budget that we have that we can do the street repairs and pot holes and, and what have you like that. And right now, you know, they're in the sidewalk repairs. And so what we're looking at is being able to do that, which we understand now that we should be putting seven million into the budget every year to do those repairs, and we're not doing that. We're about one point four million in there to, to do that. So, and you know, so what does that leave us as an alternative? And, and, uh, in the enterprise fund, I mean, not the enterprise, but in, in the general fund, the only way we can do anything like that is sell more bonds. And so that brings in more indebtedness for us to do, to do that, so that, that ticks up. So, I'm just saying, at this point in time, I think we really need to sit down and take a look and, and make some adjustments. And, you know, when you bring somebody in and when you're on a part-time basis or, or a year, and you're looking at bringing them on, uh, till, and, and April, well, you still, that, you know, that's a reoccurring expense, and, uh, and that's gonna hit you in twenty-three. And so what we're needing to do, and, and like, uh, Alex said down there, I think we can get to, uh, in this and drop it down to at least a sixty-nine cent out of those seventy cents to, to come in sixty-nine.
Member Owens, just real quick for the data on that, that would be, we're at point three one six in the current scenario, I believe, that's us dropping out like seven hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
To get down there. I'm, I'm comfortable knowing that that ARPA grant isn't eligible, that storage facility isn't eligible for this, and we don't have the lo- Mayor, I think it's a good idea. But we don't have the long-range cost, and now it's coming out of the cash, um, and, and cash is tight.
Right.
Um, I'm, I would be content with seven hundred and fifty coming out. The city can decide how they want to allocate it. I wouldn't recommend on that ARPA, the, the storage facility, um, that would bring our rate to sixty-nine, and for the folks that don't want to mess with the budget, we can just push that to the mid-year till we have more answers. And so that's what my proposal would be, member Hernandez, based on the discussions.
So, Mayor, um, if, if I could, I guess, I, I could potentially get behind that if I would also ask of staff to find what other opportunities there may be. Um, in some conversations that I've had here recently, um, with, um, state agencies where there may be some potential for, uh, funding there, Mayor, maybe we can identify, uh, funding sources and come, come back to this item. Um, otherwise, I mean, I, I could be amenable to it, it's not, uh, a game changer for me one way or the other, but obviously, if we can find other funding sources, I would be, you know, happier with that scenario.
Let me, uh, let me chime in on this, because the, the facility that we're talking about was an idea that I had after the, the freeze, but I also said it didn't need to be paid for out of property tax dollars. I've made abundantly clear that it didn't need to be paid out of cash or of prop- uh, property tax dollars, and if we had a grant for it, we could move forward with it. I have no problem cutting it, because that was the criteria that I put it out to you guys under. Uh, and so if, if, if it's not ARPA eligible, or there's not other dollars, you know, readily available, you know, through some type of a grant, I have no problem cutting that, because that was, I, I said, if it's, and at the early stages, we anticipated that it would be ARPA eligible. And naturally, those rules get changed and defined and all that kind of stuff along the way. So I have no problem doing it, the, the, for the citizens wondering, uh, talking about having a facility that we can house, uh, seventy-two hours' worth of, of water and rations and those types of things in the event we have a disaster. Uh, as we always see, we have a run on those things, people don't have it afterwards, and, and so just, and the stores just simply can't, uh, house enough. We try to push for people to be responsible and have it ready, but there's always a certain amount in our community that just don't have it. And so it was an, an event to be ready, uh, for after an event. We always do a great job in the middle, we always do a great job preparing, and wanted to do a great job in helping our community after. But if it is not, uh, gonna be paid for out of ARPA funds, I would just as soon not do that, uh, certainly out of cash. So, uh, that, that's my two cents. I don't even vote on the budget, that's, that was my idea.
Mayor, and I think-
Mayor, I think, I think that's, I'm kind of with you. I mean, I think when we discussed it originally, we felt, I don't think there was a consensus yet on council whether we wanted to move forward with the project. I don't mind setting this aside. I don't want to eliminate it from the budget as a line item because what Member Hernandez has alluded to is a conversation that he and I both had with our state rep about them having, as part of a special session, them going through and trying to figure out how they can allocate the art money. So I want to, I would like to keep it in. I don't mind removing the budgetary item from, from general fund, but I'd like to keep it in so that if we can get that on the list of funded projects, we can possibly get, get it funded and it still be in the budget so we can move.
So the, I guess the question I would ask, and just a second, Eric, that question I would ask is if it's in the C I P but unfunded, does that meet some state requirement that it's in our plan?
So it depends. I mean, we're talking about a state plan that we haven't identified, so I guess that's.
Sure. And I guess if we're, if we're talking to our state rep, I don't know what would be needed or, you know, in a, in a budget or in a C I P. I mean, we have a lot of things in our C I P that are twenty years out that are unfunded. All of a sudden, you know, it's eligible for a grant because it's on our fair plan or parks plan or drainage plan or something like that.
Just to recap, so when we, when the C I P was presented and you adopted that, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there was direction that, discomfort with debt funding that. So that's why it got moved here. And there is monies, it's out of cash, but there is logic in that with our reimbursements from ARPA and so forth, that, I'm sorry, not ARPA, from the reimbursements that we got for our, yeah, direct, direct expenses, that there is money that was coming into the city from that. So it's not a specific ARPA designation, but that's how it goes.
So given that, so given that, I, I, I think it can stay, quote, in a budgetary line item, but maybe it's, it's pushed later into the budget year where that gets identified. And if it's, if it's paid for out of those types of funds, then maybe it is. I, again, I'd rather, I'd rather punt that one if it's not coming out of ARPA.
It's, it's not a direct, it wasn't an ARPA. What's the next one after ARPA? I'm forgetting, blanking now.
ARPA, Harpa.
That was ARPA and cares.
Okay, it was cares then ARPA, sorry. So anyway, so, yeah, it was, it's cash. It's a one time out of there. And if I could, you know, everybody knows, I mean, on the positions mid year, I don't think that makes it any less needed. It's just a reality that even if we had the money at October one, we can't recruit and get somebody on here. So it's getting those people positions on and budgeting properly for them. It's a trick bag because I know there's been comments in the past, well, so we funded them all at hundred percent. And so when we got this, said, well, realistically, we're not going to be able to recruit, get them on till mid anyways. So it's making me less.
Just a second, can I cut you off? Pardon the jaws?
No, sir. The city manager clarified what I was going to say.
So I think, I think I'm, you know, again, I think we're comfortable with that. We've got some, we've got some clear decisions to make on that. And I do believe the instruct, I can understand where staff came from. The instruction came from us to not debt fund it. You know, they reacted by cash funding and hopefully get a grant. I think that maybe that we continue to operate as that, but try and eliminate it as cash flow through the general fund. Unless there's, maybe we put a line item on there that says assumed grant money, and then it goes through the general fund to that. I don't know if that's something that we could do. And if not, then, you know, we try and make that work in the budget. But I'm, I'm comfortable with Member Camp Car's suggestion, you know, considering the discussions we've had in the past. I would say, you know, to Member, Member Owens's concern, I mean, we go line by line. There's probably more things to add than there is to cut. You know, I've never been comfortable with our spending on roadway improvements, sidewalk improvements, drainage improvements. Those are large items. We just can't fund them to the levels that honestly the citizens demand of us. I can't tell you, I mean, in my own neighborhood, I, there was a long stretch of people asking for trip hazard repair, a gap repair, sidewalk repair. We're having to get creative by making that a bond project. You know, and the lower we, the lower we get with the rate, the less opportunity we have with the state's restrictions on how we can catch up with the rate to be able to catch up. Again, we're having to be creative with a storm fee to be able to go after storm projects more aggressively, a bond project to go after sidewalks more aggressively. So I think, you know, certainly there's, there's things that we critique. There's, in any budget, there's things we critique, but I just don't, I want us to be careful about getting too low on this, on this rate and cutting things that are already deep cuts. I mean, we're already bleeding by going into the, taking the, the one point one million for, for J hack and going into cash. I mean, that's something I'm not comfortable with. I just don't really want to get too deep, or I think we're going to get ourselves too far behind where we can't catch up, particularly when it comes to employee salaries. Because I think that over the next five years, we're going to have a more difficult time keeping up, not just with COLA, but also with, with competitive balance.
Okay. Any other, Councilman Little, any comments?
I agree with pretty much everything that's said. You know, we've been through a couple of natural disasters. Not only have the, as the city stepped up and ended to the needs of the citizens, but the businesses have and the citizens have. So I think we can punt on this emergency building. And, you know, if, if we can find some of these cuts that Councilman Camp Car suggested, maybe not lower the tax rate on some of those, but reallocate the, the cuts to maybe some sidewalks, improve on sidewalk. I think the seven fifty cut gets us down probably below seven. I would, I would be for some additional cuts as long as we reallocate it to something that makes sense.
Member Little, just briefly, the proposal C I had, we had the one point five. And one of the ones I said, I was saying was put seven hundred or eight hundred thousand in the pocket of the taxpayers and then go put a hundred thousand from the, that list and go and make a small payment into that sidewalk fund that is being used. It wouldn't move all the needle, but it would move some of these, I would say, less critical budget items into something that we hear the residents talk about over and over and over, which is sidewalk, sidewalk, road, road. So that was one of the thoughts, but we have to get consensus and I'm willing to look at that if the team is.
Okay. We have a motion on the table. Oh, we have a motion on the table. So I guess where I'm headed is there's a consensus to maybe do something. So we have a, we have a motion and a second on the table. Am I hearing movement from that? That's, that's what I'm trying to ask.
I would say I'm comfortable with, if there's consensus from council, we can, we can approve this budget with the request that upon the second reading, the seven fifty towards the, towards the emergency bunker is, is allocated or is modified in the budget as we had discussed.
What, what is that?
That's what I was going to ask of Eric. What would make it the cleanest for you if you feel there's consensus up here to back the seven fifty out?
The cleanest way to do this, first, it is important to know, and I want you to know that this is cutting a one time expense, even if it pays, is paid for with grant money later. That money that we're cutting now is, is not going to be there in the future for things like salaries and item streets and sidewalks. So just want to make sure that we're clear about that. The cleanest way to do this and other staff, please chime in, I'm thinking would be to just make an amendment to remove that item from the budget for whatever that equal amount is and not go the route of setting a tax rate of point six nine nine or something like that.
If I hear you, Eric, if we, if we did that and if that's going to tax rate.
Right, so, so that's the rub of it is, if, if, do you want to substitute the seven fifty for another capital expenditure, whether it be, as Member Little said, streets and sidewalks or something else like that, another one time capital or something else? So.
I mean, since it's coming out of cash, I mean, it's, it's cash, right? And typically, streets and sidewalks, I say it's a one time expense. I mean, you have to replace things, hopefully not the next year, but somewhere out, you know, I, it might be a good down payment to move the seven fifty into streets and sidewalk repair or sidewalk repair. And then, but I think what.
So the cleanest thing, if I could, Mayor, sorry, would be to lower the expenditure amount by seven fifty K and maintain the rest. So then you would, that would just flow to unencumbered cash. Instead of having thirty two thousand, we'd have seven hundred and eighty two thousand of cash that was, council could allocate, save, spend, whatever they wanted to do, so.
The city manager, I think when I talk to Member Owens, I talk to all the other members, the goal is to have a rate, rate, some level of rate movement the other way. To the, the point that Member Little made, I'm okay. I would hope we can look at that facility, punt it to the next year, give that to the taxpayer, so to speak. And then there's one point two million in some of these. We could find a hundred thousand and make the down payment into that fund. And I'm, I'm, I'm stopping. I feel like that's as good as I can do considering it's late, it's rainy, and there's only so much pounding we can do on the situation. But that's, that's where I'm.
But I think, and I, I hear you, and I think what, unless there's consensus, there needs to be a clear consensus across here doing this. I think what the other part that I was hearing and Eric and others is we, we do need to vote on something tonight and then come back and do cleanup on the twenty seventh with clear direction from this body. That makes sense.
Yes, sir.
You know, making some type of amendment to, as Eric said, take the seven fifty for that building, set it aside, keep it in the C I P, but don't fund it, that type of language. And then if we want direction on tax rate, staff would need clear direction. We gave them clear direction two weeks ago to hold the tax rate at point seven oh eight. And now we're moving away from that, if that's what I'm hearing, which is fine, this council's prerogative. But we need to have a vote tonight so we're not in an emergency situation on the twenty seventh.
I, I think, for me, I, you know, at least the direction we gave at the last meeting, I'm still comfortable with. Let's hold the rate where it's at, the seven fifty, if it's coming out of the cash. We could give direction to staff with respect to priorities for the next meeting. We could either, maybe one of three options, we hold it in reserve. We take it to streets and sidewalks and additionally fund that for the year. Or we see if we can reduce the number of staff members that we can't, that we can prevent from having to get capped, if that's, if that's a possibility. But I mean, I'd be comfortable with that. I think, I mean.
You know, Mayor, one of the things I just want to push, you know, I think it's time, you know, we take a look at the budget across through here and take a real serious look at it. And, you know, not only us here that's on the council, but also the rest of the residents in Pearland. You know, it hadn't been too long ago to, we had the federal money in here, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we distributed out to there and part of it went on some of the rent payments and things like that. We're still looking at a five point seven percent unemployment. And these are the same people out of the hundred and twenty five thousand here that is paying these taxes. And they're going some, you know, some rough times, just like everybody else is going through. And so when you look across the table, you take Pearland School District, Allen School District, and, and also the city of Pearland, and those are three largest employers we've got. And when you look across there, the only reason that they stay alive is because of the taxpayers coming in paying taxes. So I think, you know, that at some point in time, we're going to have to look back on consideration for the taxpayers here. You know, they've gone through a rough time with this virus and what have you, and a lot of people have been able to go back to jobs, but not the same jobs they had in the beginning. There may be the jobs that they got, which they had, trying to work, you know, and make a little bit of money at their down in fifteen, maybe twenty dollars an hour, which they were, you know, two or three times that. People hadn't, you know, it's just, to me, you know, I think that we can do some reductions here on this budget and get to the point and, and in twenty three, I'm hoping everything will be better with the, with the virus and everything else and people, you know, the employment's back up. So.
I guess the.
That's what I'm saying, just don't forget the people.
I, no, I, I get that. I guess the point I'm trying to make is we need to vote on something tonight. And we can't just throw a dart against the board. I've heard one proposal, one, one.
Good one, real good one.
But there's been no amendment to the motion. There's been no second to that amendment to move forward. We have an amendment, excuse me, we have a motion and a second on the table to accept what staff presented to us.
Mayor, if I may, I could.
I'm just trying to get where we move and, and vote on something.
It sounds like we have some consensus here to make this amendment. I just wanted to ask before I put that forward, which I will in just a second, if we could also get some direction, maybe the next meeting perhaps on potential encumbrances, if we do move the tax rate again. I know the state sets parameters on, you know, kind of movement of tax rates. And if we are in a different situation next year, I would just like to see some clarity there. If it would put us in a situation where we'd have to do, you know, all sorts of additional things to get us where we may need to be in the future. So I don't know what that looks like, but at this point, Mayor, I will move to go ahead and at least, did, did you want to use some form of motion?
No.
Okay. So I'll make, so I'll, I'll, so I'll move that we back the seven fifty out from the budget.
And this is to hit the rate?
It just, I'm just going to pull the, the line item, the seven fifty for the storage building out of the budget.
And then punt the decision on what to do with it to the next meeting with some information provided. And that could look like reallocating it to streets and sidewalks. It could look like.
Correct, to what Member Perez pointed out earlier, yes.
Yeah, but we're not, I mean, I think, but maybe what the mayor is soliciting, do we have four or more votes comfortable with the rate as proposed?
I mentioned last time that I was comfortable with looking into lowering that, so.
Mayor, what is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the rate, roughly speaking? Do you have that number?
Top of my head, close to a cent. It's, 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 takes a lot of calculation because there's a lot of, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting what we call them in Texas, rates built into the property tax rate.
I, I don't mean to put you on the.
Best guess is it's probably point seven five. It's probably seventy five percent of a cent. A penny is, is.
Eight fifteen.
Well, when you, when you look at the non TERS related side of things, we're at ten billion in the non TERS.
So that is an important thing, and I appreciate the, the concern because when you go below where we had recommended it, we start to lose some of the TERS reimbursement that goes to the general fund. So it's a double whammy on that. So if you lower the rate below, the calculation requires we will lose more money from the TERS reimbursement to the general fund for operations.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Can you expand upon that just real quickly? Because the, the TERS calculation, we get sixty four percent or something like that of our rate. So it, but it's, the, the calculation is such that if we lower our operating rate below where we have it in this recommendation, then we'll lose by that calculation some of what the TERS pays us for the administrative fee for that. So it'll be a double. So we got to be very cautious about that, apart from taking from the rate and, you know, all the state formulas and so forth, how they have it capped. And I know you can quote unquote bank some of it. I don't know what, we haven't had to approach that. So, you know, it's not like if you don't use it, you lose it the next time. But, you know, we are substituting a seven fifty, a non recurring cost or for these other recurring operations where we might be hurting ourselves.
I see.
I'll make a motion to reduce the budget by the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Go from one hundred million three two down to ninety nine point five seven, that that amount be allocated to the taxpayer, i.e. we don't collect it and lower the rate.
Making a motion?
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
We have a, I mean, this isn't, we aren't setting a rate on this agenda item, right?
No, it's the, but, yeah, so they, they are requesting a reduction of the budget of seven hundred, to the, to the extent of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Great. But to be clear, his motion's talked about another piece of that which affects the rate, so that wasn't. Understood.
Two separate items. We'll have to do one, you have to adjust the budget, and then you will deal with the rate separately in the.
Item four, which is directly after this, is the rate. And so I, you know, the, the amendment that's on the table addresses both. We need to address it separately.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to withdraw your motion and.
Well, just really quickly, I don't want to pocket the seven hundred and fifty thousand or to just put it in cash balance. I want it to lower the rates so the taxpayer actually feels a relief.
Then I think to the mayor's, mayor's point, let's deal with it a step at a time. If we have consensus that we're going to remove the seven fifty expenditure from the budget, then we get to the rate. We can discuss whether we leave the seven fifty as part of the rate and reallocate it or we lower the rate.
And I'm just trying to keep us compliant with state law that we have to pass a budget before we can do anything on the rate. That's all I'm trying to do.
And I'll, I'll add even more, the, the council adopts a general fund expenditure at a total amount. So what was said at the first half of that would, would be in line with that to lower the expenditure cap by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The revenue piece of it is not immaterial, but it's important. But that's really, the expenditures is what our cap is for the year upcoming, and that's what's the matter.
So let me, let me ask maybe a follow up question since you brought that up. If we lower the seven fifty and we're able to find the grant money, does that limit us from being able to use that money in this budget year?
It's not that simple because we'd come, if you got. It's not that simple because we'd come, if you got a grant or something, we'd probably run that through, not the general fund, but the grant fund. So it wouldn't appear here anyway.
That's why I would leave it in the CIP. We have a plan for it and those types of things. Do we want to reconsider? We have a motion and a second on the table that had rate information. Do we want to reconsider your motion?
Yes, Mayor, I appreciate you giving me the space there. I apologize. Can I reconsider the motion? I'd like to reduce the expenditure cap by $750,000. In this case, I believe, Eric, it's 95, 99, 572 million.
We have a motion.
I'll second your motion.
Okay. So now we have a, we have a motion and a second to amend new business item number three, ordinance number 1605, by reducing the expenses $750,000. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I don't want to get into the other number because we'll end up missing one number somewhere. It's $750,000 isn't easy, is an easy number to remember. Any questions, comments on the amendment? Not the overall, but the amendment?
From staff, there's no necessity that we clarify where the 750 is being reduced from.
Council's adopting Amendment Attachment A, which is the expenditure caps. So that's all you need.
As long as you're good, I'm good.
Okay. All right. No other questions or comments. Madam Secretary, we're going to call a vote on the amendment, okay?
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to strike $750 on the expenditure cap.
$750,000.
$750,000, thank you. On the, it's like, that's nothing, on the expenditure cap from Exhibit A.
There we go, just for the tape. Want to make sure we're right. And then, we had a vote. Now we have, now we have an amended motion on the table. And we just voted on that amendment. Are there any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote on the amended motion.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero. To adopt the original motion as amended.
Item number four. Mr. Kamkar, would you place that on the table for consideration? And then we can discuss.
Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance. Really quick, City Attorney, do I have to read the body of this or do I just say the ordinance number? I have to reference the tax.
Yeah, go and read the entire captions, given it's a tax rate.
Yeah. Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1606, an ordinance adopting a tax rate of .708250 and levying taxes for the use and support of the municipal government of the City of Pearland, Texas, and providing for the interest and sinking fund of the taxable year 2021. So.
Motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. And given the gravity of the matter, we do have a brief PowerPoint just to refresh on what you've seen before, for the record.
Yep, we'll go quick. Taxable value continues to increase. You can see in yellow the city taxable roll versus the TERS total assessed valuations. Property tax revenue, again, you can see the rate there peaked in FY '20 and has come down since then. I know it sounds like there's going to be a motion here in a second to maybe decrease this rate further. One of council's goals has been to reallocate debt service to the O and M portion of things. And I just want to make it clear that reducing the O and M rate kind of takes us back a step on that ratio. We can't do both at the same time. So right now, we're at 45% available for operations, which is a 2.7% increase from FY '21. Here's the proposed tax rate for maintenance and operations. You add that to your debt service rate, you get your total proposed property tax rate of .708250. Here you can see an example of a property with zero growth. Nothing new here, since we haven't changed the rates since we first generated these. Give some property tax examples. Again, your zero growth, one is highlighted as AVs change property tax rates and how that looks out or played out in the other homestead examples. Looking a little bit more into some additional property tax examples. So I will bring it back to City Manager Pearson for any closing remarks.
Nothing to add, Mayor.
Okay. So with that, we'll open up for council questions, comments. I know we just voted and approved a budget with amending the 750 out. So what's comments we have on the tax rate? So I guess the question I have is, so we cut cash expenditures of 750K. What does that look like from a reoccurring revenue versus expense? If we're to cut the rate?
If you were to cut the rate, so essentially the way that that is coming out is that money can be used right now for reoccurring expenses. You know, 750K has been freed up to be used for reoccurring expenses going forward because that's essentially being paid for by the total revenue stream of the general fund. A little bit of that cash balance is coming in from, you know, now I'm forgetting it, City Manager Pearson, CARES Act funding that is coming back paying us for expenses and things like that. So it's a complicated picture. If you reduce the tax rate, that is, that money would have to come back if we want it for recurring expenditures next year. And we do have expenditures that we know are going up, right? So you have comp and class that will need a further implementation in FY '22 in addition to the other sort of employee salary increases that we incur at a normal year. Does that answer your question, Councilman Carbone?
Maybe, I guess my concern is we, we cut a one-time expenditure, then we decrease revenue going forward, and we didn't decrease ongoing expenditures. So, yeah, I struggle, I struggle with that side of things. When, when did we start talking about cutting this out of the CIP? Right here on the dais? Yeah. We had a CIP discussion back in June, I guess it was. And I think everybody was skeptical at that point, but we then voted and passed it. Well, not, yeah, as long as we didn't pay debt for it. Right.
Member Carbone, the 750 only came up, really, the goal was to get more out of recurring items. A proposal, CND, had 1.2 million out of budget items. And this item was a lot more palatable because it was, it didn't have the funding attached to it. We've now brought the cap down. So we could reduce recurring expenditures here. But I know that there's probably not the appetite to go line by line and do that hand fighting, but we could. And so this was a, an interim solution that maybe, you know, we can cut the rate and deal with that way. I mean, those dollars would have gone out no matter what.
And they're also the very top priority that we placed on our council and mayor goal-setting agenda back in May was to go and do some kind of scrubbing. So it sounds like, I certainly don't want to sit here and do that tonight, but it sounds like there will be an opportunity to go and recoup some of that in the, over the next year as we seek to fulfill those goals.
Yeah, and to be clear on that, yeah, we passed a goal to scrub. But we also told them during the workshop to, because we were already into this budget year, that would be a priority in the, in the, in the next budget year. Which, so I would expect that scrubbing to happen, you know, in the 22, 23.
Sure. I guess I'm just addressing the concern that then we're in a position where we can't make up that $750,000 delta. I think the way this would work, when we came up for the next budget, we would have completed that scrubbing exercise, and you would be able to do that.
I'm kind of with you, Member Orlando. I'm just considering that we, we know we need to make up some ground with employees next year and what the pressure the state has put on us about once we get to a rate, how difficult it is to get that rate amended. And our priorities and the direction we gave to staff was kind of mid this budget, kind of too far down the road to really do what all we had. I think I'd much prefer us have the flexibility into next year and then look at, you know, once we get into February, look at what we can do with some of the recurring expenses and drive the rate down there, but still have some flexibility to get staff up with the 2% COLA and get everybody to 100% without, without tying our hands too much. I mean, to be honest with you, I'd much rather use the 750 to go out and build sidewalks, since we're, you know, unrecoverably behind on that. I mean, we're not really, my point has been, since I've been on here, we're not really saving the money. We're just pushing on debt. It's just debt we can't see on our books. The roads are still going to fall into disrepair. The sidewalks still need to be fixed. The storm sewer still needs to be increased because there's more water coming out of the sky, as we will see tonight. None of those debts show up on the books. But the more we tie our hands and give ourselves limited options, the less we have the ability to pay down that unfunded unidentified debt. And that's what causes me concern. I mean, certainly I would, I mean, like, like we've said repeatedly, we're not exempt from this tax rate. And I got seven people to live in my house. I'd much rather have the money. You know, I, I, I've got a business here, I've got, I've got a home here. I hope to have other businesses here. You know, I'd certainly much rather have the money in my account. But I do think, you know, once we start cutting too deeply, and to be honest with you, to get to the rate that we have, I think we've cut more than we would otherwise be comfortable with. I think it's just best to give us our flexibility, keep the rate where it is, give ourselves a little bit more flexibility, and then give staff a little bit more opportunity to find the line items and the recurring debt going into our next February session with some white papers. And we can start giving some clear direction on what we want to do with recurring debt.
While you're thinking, I'm more in line with giving the 750 back to the taxpayer. My last full budget session, the way I want to be remembered.
Please, with glory. Mayor, I'm, I'm going to go with Member Little. I think this needs to go to the taxpayer. I understand the recurring nature of certain things. This is kind of difficult, but these are recurring items. The, the storage unit is going to have water, and going to have MREs and have other stuff attached with it. There's going to be a recurring expense there. And we don't even have the workup of what, do we need to replace $5,000 or $50,000 worth of MREs? I don't know the answer to that. I just, that data is unknown. I would like to give it to the taxpayer. I understand what Member Perez's points are on, on pocketing. I just, you know, three of the last five years, we gave a rate increase. And now we're going to do one year. Last year, we went down. Let's go down this year and even that out. I could be convinced to put $100,000 of these to sidewalks, and I would be open to that if, if there was other momentum to do so. But I, my, my motion, not my motion, my intent would be to give it to the taxpayer and reduce the rate by the commensurate $750,000, or whatever that would buy.
You've been on here for, what, 16 years? You should be used to this, right?
Turn your mic on. Get your mic.
Oh, you want to hear it?
They want to hear it.
Anything that you can give back to taxpayers, I'd appreciate it, you know, to be able to do that. And, and I think that's where we're at. There's, like I say, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of things that happened over this past year, and not only us, but the other people in the city have experienced that, some of the hardships that we've got. So anything I think that we're able to give back to them, I think it's a lot better for us to be able to do them.
Eric, you got something?
I do want to point out that the council has, has given us multiple goals for a city, for the city to achieve, right? More money for infrastructure, more money for public safety while reducing taxes. And the budget largely does that. We are already reducing taxes, and I just want to make that clear for the public that there's already a tax rate decrease baked in. There's no tax increase on the table at all. Reducing this funding will permanently, unless you want to raise taxes in the future, or if we think we can outgrow it, make achieving those other goals harder for staff. It's going to be harder to find money for streets and infrastructure or, you know, stormwater projects, things like that. So I just want to make sure that the full picture is getting considered.
I'll add to that and would caution against, if, if, if there is, and I haven't quite gotten there from what I've heard, there is a desire to do what's been talked about, at least a few, then you don't, I would suggest not lock in yourselves into a number tonight because we need to do the calculations and show you that TERS piece of it. It's not a one-for-one on 750, it's a fact. So you're, otherwise, you're going to be making that even worse.
So what would our, Darren, what would our options be if we don't vote on a rate tonight? That means that.
No, I think you could vote on, correct or wrong, Darren, you could, you could vote on the rate that's been presented. We can amend that at second, once you had that number. So you could have that amended at that point.
Yes, that was what I was getting to. If we, if we vote on the current rate now, we can reduce it on the second reading, correct, Darren? But if we don't vote on any rate, because there's not consensus, that means we have to have a supermajority at the next meeting for an emergency.
Right. That is, that is correct. The charter requires that, excuse me, that there be two readings. And if we didn't approve one tonight, there would not be two readings. It would be the once and only reading at the next meeting, which would require three force vote of council.
So it could amend it next meeting.
Yes, but if you adopted this tonight and then came back at the next meeting and opted to go lower than this proposed tax rate, you have the right to do so.
So can we set the goalposts that there seems to be significant interest in doing that at the next one, pass this vote, and then come back with that analysis from staff to make sure we don't make any stupid decisions with regards to the TERS? But kind of putting the goalpost out that there's been expressed interest in that by, Member Kamkar, and I said that last time. I heard two other members say that this time, that they would be comfortable with looking at that. I also want to not make stupid decisions. So if we could come back with that analysis and just have that teed up, that, that is the will of the council to look at that at the next meeting.
Yeah, it may not be a one-to-one. It might be a two-to-one, three-to-one. We don't know what that number is until we do. And I think it's wise that we know that, especially on the payback, because there's financial implications.
Sure. I just want to make sure that we, we don't lose sight of the fact where we are tonight. And we're going to, we're going to make a vote to be prudent on what's being presented, but with the knowledge that there seems to be a significant number of members that would like more information before making a final decision next time.
I'm good with that, Mayor, so that's three.
Well, yeah, it is.
We're good to go.
But I, so if I hear, what I'm hearing is we would approve the .708 and change whatever this is, and with, with instructions to show what the 750 out would be in a rate action next week or two weeks, and how that would be affected, understanding the TERS, understanding all of those kind of things. We may not see a, a .7, you know, .75. We might see a .4 or whatever. I don't know. I don't know what it's going to be once.
Mayor, I think that's a good idea. What I would just say is, when I was running, I was not elected, we reduced the rate two cents from 74 to 72. I don't think one time the interior, the ulterior implications of moving off the TERS was ever brought up. So it just feels convenient now, now that that's becoming the reason why we shouldn't do this. You know, I have to joust if they joust a little bit. But I just, that, it's a point that wasn't brought up last year.
I'll joust back. I mean, the math is the math. I mean, you weren't here, but that is a fact of how that comes about.
And you guys voted two cents.
I would say, let's.
And you voted two cents.
Let, let's just, let's just not joust.
We're having a discussion.
Every year is independent of itself. Everything there's, as the public can see, as the council can see, there is an enormous complexity that goes into setting this. It's not as simple as here's the property taxes and here's the rate. Every year, our economy changes, everything changes. So I, I want to be careful. Again, that's impugning motive to people. Let's be careful with that in a meeting like this. Everybody's trying to do the best that they can. We have given staff incredibly clear direction. And now we're changing from that tonight, which, which is our prerogative. But understand, they, they have come back tonight with what we're voting on, exactly what we asked for as a body. And I just, so we're, we're moving from that and I'm okay with that. But that doesn't mean that they're hiding something. So I just want to make sure that we, you know, we understand that, all right?
So if we're on the same page, can?
Yeah, I would like to call the motion.
Yeah, we, well, I don't think we.
We already have a motion.
We already have a motion in a second.
The guidance, I think, is understood, we can just go.
We're not amending that. I think, I think staff is, is critically aware, we're going to come back and show us what that effect will have on the rate.
For sure.
Mayor, just real quick, one last thing. What was the, the count? I didn't hear, I thought I heard Hernandez here to go in and judge that.
Well, I think staff has that direction, so I don't, they're going to bring that to us regardless.
But there is consensus to go do that now.
Yeah.
I think there's consensus that, there's consensus to ask staff to evaluate it and give it back.
To give us scenarios.
Next meeting. I don't think there's consensus for us to move in any direction other than to adopt, at least what I've heard is adopt the motion as presented and give us the most flexibility for the next meeting.
But, but in, to that point, to have it for next meeting as, going to the taxpayer as opposed to having it go to fund balance?
I have, so what I am hearing, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that we want to have it come back. So now there's 750,000 in the general fund. What would that look like if we spent a portion or all of it for streets and sidewalks? And kind of what does that get you for your money?
He's finishing.
And then another scenario that says, hey, here's a, a tax write-up of, you want to remove 750,000? Let's get through all the details. If you remember in the front of the binder, it's like 30 pages of calculations to run through. Let us run the traps on that and say, here's your tax rate if you just want to remove that $750,000 and quote, give it back to the taxpayer. Is, is that, so kind of two options there? Is, is that what we're talking about?
I think the main option is, what is it, what effect does it have on the tax rate?
Yes, sir.
If we attack it to the tax rate? I think we also have to take into consideration, as Ben mentioned, we need to be careful with the TERS payouts and those types of things. What effect does that have? So it may not be a one to one, $750,000 back to the taxpayer. It may be, you know, in half that, maybe 40%, maybe 60%. I don't know what that is. So if I understand consensus up here, is we want to look at it as a, as a tax rate implication. Did I get that wrong?
That's, that's what my understanding.
That's what I understand as well.
Okay. I was the only one that brought up utilize it for anything else, so I don't think.
And, and I, and I think.
I think it's just, just down on the rate is the only instruction we get.
Right.
Mayor, I, I would like to call the question.
Okay. And that's, I don't believe it as well. We have a second to call the question?
We need to, right. I think he's saying that informally.
Yeah. So I, but I think we have direction. Eric, does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. With that, Madam Secretary, I want to call for the vote.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little? Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens? Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to approve the first reading of ordinance number 1606.
And what I would ask, so in essence of our time tonight with impending storm, I want to get through five and six. They're both budget related, they're development and non-development fees that have an impact on the budget. And then go to our public hearings. I'm getting word that high winds around 11:00, okay? And it's not quite eight o'clock yet. So I want to get through that and then we'll make a call after we get through the public hearings. Is that found? Okay. With that, member Little, would you place number five, new business number five on the table?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Consideration of possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1358-21. Do I need to read the whole thing, Darren?
No. No.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second, staff report.
So we've got a presentation for this, Eric?
Yep. So these are our non-development fees. We adopt the fee schedule once per year. These changes can be found online as well. I'll be highlighting some of the newer fees this year. So we have to start off three new fees. One is a dedicated Wi-Fi connection fee, one is a dedicated high power fee, and one is a equipment ceiling rigging fee. You can see the costs there are different between residents and non-residents. And this applies to Independence Park only. These fees are something you see in other cities, fee structures, they're fairly common. We just haven't had them in there for now, or we haven't had them until this point. Some other fee updates for FY '22. Water and sewer customer use fees, so we talked about the 5% rate increase. That is then brought into this fee schedule. That's kind of where we codify what the actual rate schedules look like. You can see the changes there from what they used to be to what they would be in red. So again, this reflects the 5%. That is what the budget is, or that is what your fee schedule that you're voting on encapsulates. We have some updated water and sewer comparisons. So this is some new information here. Pearland, and then where we're going to, the 7725, this is reflecting that 5% rate increase now instead of the 9% that had been originally proposed. We also picked up Houston's new rates because they released them since we last spoke. So you see Houston up here is around $92 for 6,000 gallons. And I, an average household uses around 6,800 gallons in the summer. So I'm glad we were able to get Houston's update in here. Local cities, you're looking at this 12,000 gallons per household, going from $133 to $140, $140 with a 5% rate increase. And then looking at sit-down restaurants, going from 3,500-ish to 3,700-ish. We are also bringing our solid waste fees into the fee schedule. I believe before we just kind of had them in the contract or in a different ordinance. We were getting better about putting everything all in the same place to make it easier and more transparent. So these fees, I believe you've seen all of them already. They've, they've been checked six ways to Sunday to make sure that, you know, people aren't getting double taxed and things like that. So these are all included in there. They're on page four of the non-development fee schedule. And then I believe the state had some changes to these alcohol beverage permits. You can see that a few of them are actually going away. None of the costs have gone up. It's mostly just kind of language clarifications. Questions on non-development fees? And I'll give it back to Mr. Pearson.
Nothing to answer.
Okay, we'll open it up to council comments, questions, concerns. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
This is to memorialize the 5%, right?
Correct.
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to approve the first reading of ordinance 1358-21.
All right, moving to new business item number six, member Perez, present that, please.
Thank you, Mayor, consideration of possible action, first reading number, ordinance number 1023-11, so moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, staff report.
Eric?
All right. Other side of the coin are our development fee schedules. Redline version of this is of course available online. New fees for FY '22 are, we have these required notification fees that are being added, these legal notice and the public hearing notices for mailouts. One's 50, one's a dollar per letter. And there's some additional information there on the side. These can be found on pages three and seven of the development fee schedule. We have a, an additional new fee. It's a $150 fee for the rescheduling of an item posted for any sort of board commission or council consideration. And then this can be found on, found on page seven of the development fee schedule. And then we have some updates to existing fees. Exhibit C, which is not pictured here, but there is a processing fee increasing from $20 to $25 that can be found on page 15. Exhibit D, you have the $55 building permit charge being corrected to be $5.50. I think that was just a Scrivener's error. The processing fee is being increased from 20 to 25, and the fire inspection fee is being increased from 20 to 200. Yep. Which is also a Scrivener's error that's being corrected. Back to you, City Manager Pearson.
Back to you, Mayor and Council.
All right. Any questions, comments from council?
We have one, Mayor. Thank you. So this is something I brought up and glad that Chief is here to kind of, I've talked about this in the past with relation to the food, the grades that we put in the windows. And so this is kind of somewhat related to this. So I've kind of asked in the past if we could maybe move towards having the non, I guess, food handling violations separated somehow. So if there's just, you know, you ask somebody for their license, for instance, they don't have their food handler's license, that's points off. And so these could be clerical kind of, you know, errors that would throw a B or a C in somebody's window that I think they could clean up very easily, that it's not necessarily meaning that they're handling food in an unsafe manner. So with that, if it's possible for us to at least have one reinspection without a fee, if we're truly trying to help educate people, I just think that it's kind of a burden. A lot of, I think our restaurateurs here in town don't even know that that's a possibility. So they end up putting a, a letter grade in their window that is tied to, you know, having a bottle left on a table or something like that and not necessarily having, you know, poor food handling practices. So if there's any, you know, appetite up here for that and allowing one reinspection, you know, for free, and then eventually kind of moving in that direction to kind of help differentiate between the clerical and the, and the food handling for the grades. I would like.
Clarification on that, is that one per year? Or is it just?
Yes, one per year, Mayor.
Just asking for clarification.
Thank you for that clarification.
Member Cam Carr?
Member Hernandez, I support that. Really briefly, on the fire inspection, how intensive is that? We're charging, we're going from $20 to $200, I just want to ask.
The fee was originally $200, and when the fee schedule was updated, it was entered incorrectly as 20. So it's been 200, so we're really correcting it to what it's been historically.
So on the STRs, when we have to change their regimen and they're going to have to comply, somebody's going to have to go. Right now, the STRs, nobody has to go to their business and see that they have a fire extinguisher. At some point, they're going to have to have a fire extinguisher if we change their regulatory regimen. Will they have to pay the fee for that?
Well, that would probably, that would be covered under the, the regular annual inspection. So the fire marshal does an annual inspection anyways as part of the licensing. And so they would look for those sort of things. This is a special one, so this could be for, and I guess Chief, if you could help me on this one.
On the CO, building inspection side?
It's more than that. I think the, the special inspections, it's, it's beyond a regular annual inspection, so.
Is this where a business calls out, they've got a licensing of some sort and they need an inspection by a certain date? Their licensing, like a daycare or something like that? Is this a fee associated with that?
I'd have to get clarification on what you just said, Mayor. The special inspections are generally going to be a, a specific process that requires more intensive inspection and verification. Industrial processing or something similar to that, but we can get more information to you on that.
Mr. McDonald, then, so whenever we have to go figure out how we're going to regulate these STRs, they're going to have their once a year, show me your fire exit and show me your extinguisher. They won't have to pay, these won't be those people in this case.
Correct. This is for special, again, I do believe, as the mayor said, it would be for daycares and certain. It's also for after hours, it's for same day or expedited reviews, that sort of thing.
Great. I just, I'm done commenting, but Mr. Hernandez, I'm, I'm supportive of your ask.
Any other questions, comments?
With that, Mayor, if I could, oh, yes, go ahead.
Well, I would say, one, I think a broader conversation, Mayor, something you and I've had kind of offline is, and I don't want to make this change now, but just to start the instruction is, how many of these fees are recurring? Because there may have been an issue on our end, or maybe there was some disagreement on an inspection. And, you know, as we maybe fine tune some of these processes, what is a generate, a fee generated because there's a true failure? Is a fee generated because there may be a misunderstanding, but there was nothing structurally needed to change? I would say to, remember Hernandez's request, I think we should put, probably put a time limit on it. So a reinspection fee within a week as opposed to, okay, well, I'll just, you get an inspection, you fail, and you come out and get an inspection six months later and try it again, even though it's in the same calendar year. So if that's not too encumbering.
I think generally that's kind of how it's handled already, is that if they request that, it's within so many days if you can.
You can get them back in 24 hours.
Yeah, but I would be fine with that. But Chief, you can provide clarity on that if I'm mistaken, but.
So for new building, we'd go out there and do the inspection and then work with the, the owner or occupant to determine when we would be able to come back. Because they have to, we have to give them a reasonable amount of time as to when we would return. And that could be, that could vary depending upon what was needed to be done.
I think we're just talking about the, just the food handling inspection only.
The food handling?
Exactly. So if, if, if they fail, they got 20, they can get it re-reviewed in 24 hours, correct? That's, that's our policy, they can come back almost immediately, but they'd have to pay the fee. But if, I think, member Hernandez is saying, if it's something administrative and they can get it done pretty quickly, and that's what's taking them from a B to a C or an A to a B, we just come back, let them fix it quickly, and we don't charge them a separate fee. Just food handling.
So I'd have to tell you, I don't know exactly if they're getting charged that, if it's something as simple as a piece of paper. I'd have to verify that and get back.
So I've got the gist of what member Hernandez is saying. Let us, if you can pass it tonight, and we'll, we're going to bring you back something for the second, and we'll be done with it. Okay, I'm fine with that. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little? The motion carries seven to zero to approve the first reading of ordinance number 1023-11.
All right, thank you for that. Now we're going to go back to our public hearings, new business one, which would be the public hearing number one prior to that. I'll put the first one on the table, not on the table, but just read the public hearing request. Request by John Arledge applicant on behalf of VNB, Cornerstone LLC, owner for approval of conditional use permit for liquor package store, generally located at 3525 Main Street, Suite 160. With that, we will have a staff presentation.
Quickly, Mr. McDonald? Martin?
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is a request for approval of a conditional use permit for a packaged liquor store within the general commercial district. Properties located at 3525 Main Street. And this is at the southeast corner of Main and Magnolia Parkway. Here you can see the zoning and aerial map showing the general commercial district, abutting the R3 and generally surrounded by other commercial properties, except for that east side property line. This is a piece of property that is currently being developed. If you drive by, the building is still being worked on, but we know where the liquor store is proposed for, which is outlined on your slide. Again, this is a view of the subject property under construction. And the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing about this request on August 16th. The commission was fairly evenly divided. Three members were in support, three opposed, and one that was kind of on the fence that could make a case either, in either direction. That concludes our staff report.
Is the applicant present? All right. Do you have a presentation or anything to present? Or did staff pretty much get it? Okay. Okay. And if, if there's questions, we may call on you at that time and go to the podium and we'll do all that if there's questions or comments from council. So with that, we'll move in to those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request can go to the podium and be heard. Second request for those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. And then third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing none, we'll move to council for questions, comments, concerns? Anybody?
I'll start it off.
All right.
Do you have any other liquor stores in Pearland or anywhere else?
We have one. In fact, we were the first standalone that I opened in Pearland. It's next to Futown, 7501 Broadway. It's called Liquor Zone.
Okay.
We're trying to open a second location in Pearland.
And on this one, it was, how many within a mile radius or two mile radius? That's already there?
A mile?
Two. What's the number, two? Within a two mile radius? Okay. I won't continue any longer. I'm going to vote no on another liquor store. I think, you know, Pearland's got quite a few in here already, and I think that's enough for right now. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from council?
Any other questions, comments from council?
Sir, this is your second one you're trying to do?
Yes, sir.
And how many do you have total that you manage your own?
Three.
Three. Are you a resident of the city of Pearland?
I, I am not, but I do own a house.
For the, the guys on the development side, what was the record on the members who are opposed? Do we have that tally of who is in favor and who is opposed?
The tally of who is in favor and who is opposed?
Who are the three members in favor and who are the three members opposed?
That's what I was answering. That information was supplied in the packet. I don't have it in front of me.
While, while we're looking at that, would you, for the record, would you give us your name and address for the record, please? Thank you.
Sure. For that, for the resident, or for the store?
Just your name and address for the record?
Here in Patel, H-I-R-E-N, 9915 Wilshire Way, Houston, Texas. That's my resident.
Thank you.
Member Kim Carr says Commissioner Cade was against. Commissioner Eisenberg said, it appears as though he is, he said a lot, hold on. He would not reckon so. He's against. Commissioner Dansby is for. Commissioner Earl's is for, and Commissioner Fuertes was on the fence.
I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and be on the against side on this. I appreciate, I love a good drink, but this is a little too close proximity to some schools, and I'm just generally not in favor of that, so I'm not going to be able to get there. Thank you, though.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Seeing none, we will close this public hearing. And if we would, member Owens, would you place New Business item number one on the table for consideration?
Okay. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2021-CUP21. That's a move.
Okay. That would be dash 00024.
0024.
24. Now you move, and now a second. Motion is second. All right. We've already had staff report. I want to make sure, Darren, legally, I mean, make sure we got the right on the table.
Just for clarification, for the member that made the motion, I wanted to clarify for the record that that is R2021-CUP21-00024, is that correct? Thank you.
Thank you. We had staff report, and we had questions and comments. Madam Secretary, we're going to call for the vote.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
No.
Member Kim Carr?
No.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
The motion carries four to three.
Oh, we have a second reading. So we'll move forward to public hearing number.
If I can just say, I think I made, I think there might be one or two people up here who voted in a way different than they intended, including myself, but.
A member of the, it's a, it's a winning vote, so it would have to be a member of the side that we called it.
And there's a second reading. Thank you. No, there will not be a second reading since the CUP.
You're right. I was looking at the second one. I don't think there's anything that's going to change the outcome, so. Okay. All right. So we'll move to public hearing number two. I'm going to read.
Mayor, if I could, is the applicant clear on what happened?
The motion did carry.
Yes, you, you did pass, so you have your CUP. Congratulations.
And you're right across the Lions Club. You're going to do great.
Just to, I'm done.
Yeah. You're done. All right, moving forward, public hearing number two. It's a request by Jennifer Curtis, Meta Planning and Design LLC, applicant on behalf of Texas Land Parcels LLC, owner for an approv, for approval, proposed amendments to the plan, Town Center Planned Unit Development, PUD. General location, south side of 11200 Broadway Street, Pearland, Texas. With that, we'll move to staff presentation. And Josh, just make sure, I think Jennifer Curtis is online.
Mayor, Jennifer actually was emailing me just before we started the public hearings. I think she may be on, back on in about five minutes. So with that information, would you like for me to continue, or do you want to wait for her to come on?
If I do a brief recess, I don't know if I'll get the cats back to the table. Yeah, staff can do your presentation. Let's do your presentation. Let's see where she's, where she's at when you get back on.
Okay, understood. So this is a request for an amendment to the planned development that is the Pearland Town Center. This amendment accommodates detached townhomes. Again, that is basically a patio home, but it is detached from our normal townhomes, which are normally a three-unit minimum combined that are attached. All of this takes place on Sub Area C, which is behind and around the lake that is in existence at the Pearland Town Center. So this is the zoning and aerial map, showing the proposed location for these, or this residential development. This is the original sub-district map. This area was originally intended for an event center, but that event center has not come to fruition. And this amendment would change the allowed uses for Sub Area C to allow additional residential development there. This is the design plan that has largely remained the same from the original workshop that we conducted with applicants and PNZ and the city council earlier this year. It includes a dog park and a communal park within the development. This is the landscape plan, identifying some of the features of the development. And this is the fencing and screening plan. The areas that are highlighted in pink are a masonry wall, and the tan areas that surround the outside of the development are a four-foot tall wrought iron fence. These are the proposed renderings for each of the townhomes. These largely include stucco as the primary facade material. And I want to point out that these are the only renderings that have been provided. We don't know what the sides or the rear would look like. These are the lot layouts that would be typical. They include either a zero-foot lot line, or a three-and-three, or roughly three-and-three on either side. These are some views of the area, of the area shot by drone. The first is looking south, the second is looking east, and the third is looking west. So I want to start off parts of the discussion with what is actually platted on the ground currently. So this whole area takes in Lot 16, Lot 15, and Lot 14, going west to east. And each of these lots has been subdivided to go out to either Kirby or Business Center Drive through an elaborate scheme of flag lots that then reach back to the public roads. The driveway, or the ring road, as it's referred to within the staff report, is not a, an easement dedicated on the plat, but it is a means of access for each of these lots. So I'm going to go through six points, hopefully quickly, the first of which is access. So one of the concerns is that in order to develop lots for sale within our subdivision ordinance, those lots need to front onto a public or private street. The Pearland Town Center Ring Road is not a public or private street, so they would need to create a street in order to have access for us to then run utilities to. All of the utilities that are in existence, skipping on to my second point, are within a 28-foot wide pavement section. Normally, when we run utilities on either a public or private road, it's within a 50-foot right-of-way. All of the, all of the pavement and all of the utilities would be run within that 28-foot wide section. So this ends up installing utilities under the roadway, which is inconsistent with the city's code of ordinances for delivering public water back to these lots. One of the deviations that this development is requesting is about arrium. They have provided some increased provisions, going from an 1,800-square-foot lot to a 1,900-square-foot lot. They've also increased the minimum lot frontage from 20 to 25 foot. These were in reaction after the Planning and Zoning Commission took their action. Additionally, they supplied some building setbacks and discussed sidewalks in front of the lots in lieu of plantings. The five-foot setback is not adequate to accommodate parking in front of the garage or the required four-foot sidewalk. My next point is about Parkland dedication. As you may recall, the proposal discusses using that lake and walking path that surrounds this development on three sides in lieu of their Parkland dedication that was already accounted for as a private amenity for the Pearland Town Center with its hotels and apartments that are in existence today. Staff is opposed to this request, and it was also opposed by the Director of Parks and Recreation. Next, we'll talk about off-street parking. What's proposed is to have two parking spaces per lot inside each unit's garage, and then guest parking would be at a ratio of one to four per townhome. The applicant proposes to prohibit on-street parking within the private access easement. What staff is requesting is to have adequate area for off-site parking in front of the garages, and to have additional off-street parking be provided at a ratio of one space per two townhomes. And last, we'll talk about residential design. The renderings are more typical for a suburban product. We don't have what the rear elevations are going to be, and staff would prefer to see a facade plan that incorporates elements from the Pearland Town Center instead of this appearing to be just an addition to the Pearland Town Center. So the Planning and Zoning Commission took action at their August 2nd regular meeting. They voted to not recommend approval by a vote of three to four. That action puts the city council responsible for passing a supermajority vote. Part of staff's recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission was to have several recommendations. Those are still a port, a part of our analysis, and if so choose, we would look to include those. But afterwards, the applicant has made some concessions, but we still feel that the density that they are looking for isn't fitting to an urban product, which we had hoped would come into existence at the Pearland Town Center, and that the, if we're going to grant the density, then we also have the design and the amenities to meet those proposals. Staff fully supports the commission's recommendation. This is, this slide, I'm not going to read to you. It was included within the staff report. It goes through the additional recommendations that were labeled out at the end. With that, we conclude our staff report.
Okay, and it's, I'm understanding that Ms. Curtis is online now, okay? Ms. Curtis, we're going to turn to you for a applicant presentation, and I'm not sure if she has a visual presentation that she has sent.
She does. I'm going to run her PowerPoint for her.
Thank you. Ms. Curtis, welcome. And if you would, just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, hi. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Jennifer Curtis, Meta Planning and Design. Our office is at 24275 Katy Freeway, Suite 200, K67749. Martin, let me know when you're up. There we go, okay. So I'm not going to belabor the point too much. Pearland Town Center PUD amendment, the PUD, as you know, is intended to allow flexibility to grant variances where we can provide something that's not achievable through the normal requirements of the ordinance, and that's what we're trying to do here. Next slide, please. The location, as you know, next slide, please. And our design plan, I'm sure you all are familiar with it. Style lots with the skip townhomes. We want to provide individual lot ownership in a, in a walkable urban environment. Next slide, please. And phasing, I know Ryan discussed this previously. We talked about this. Two phases with the bulk of the Parkland in phase one. Both phases accessing the existing private driveway, so maintaining access at all times. Next slide, please. So this is starting to get into the deviations that we're looking into. The access, we're proposing to overlay the existing driveway with a permanent access easement that's intended to guarantee access to this site for all blocks without interfering with the existing operations of the center. This is not intended to be a public street that meets public street spacing requirements or like that. It is an access easement that is intended to be activity with the life of the project to guarantee access in the same way that a public guarantee access. Next slide, please. This is the survey. Next thought, please. Just briefly, something that we wanted to point out. The multifamily directly north of our current site also takes access from the circulation drum, and they have a flag that provides frontage from a public street. There's, I think, 230-something units in the permanent complex, and their frontage doesn't even align with the actual pavement on the ground. So if you're looking at comparison to our site, when we talk about access to frontage, that can be a very fluid thing, and the, and the city council has the ability to grant variances based on what they think is beneficial to the community, not necessarily what always meets the rules. Next slide. So talking about, oh, I'm sorry. I've lost my place. Just briefly talking, say that staff was requiring, we are aware of that request. We just want to point out, the use that we're proposing is definitely going to be less of a traffic impact than the residential lots, or sorry, the residential laws proposing are going to be less of a traffic impact than the event center that was previously proposed. So we're not worried about any traffic burden on the existing street network. Next slide, please. Talking about our open space, something I just want to clarify. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that we're not proposing to take any credit for open space from leave areas, nor from the detention pond. All of the areas you see in green here are proposed to be dedicated reserves. On this plat, they would be landscape preserves or private recreation or Parkland preserves, and this is the areas that are being counted towards our open space requirement. Our footage calculations that we're proposing is all this green space in the development. Our footage calculations that we're proposing is all this green space in the development. Next slide, please. And as previously, we are proposing some amenities on the site. Places for people to gather, to have parties, you know, maybe just informal social gathering, barbecue pits, somewhere they can go and have a birthday party or something like that. And also a dog park up against the pond where, you know, people here can have some space to run the dog around and get that play and that activity, even though they're in a dense urban area. Slide, please. Just some images of green space, both private and public green space within the community. Next slide, please. So what I just wanted to show with is the existing trail that goes around that detention pond and the connection that it provides to the South Public Park down in the kind of the bottom-left corner. And this is already existing amenity that residents in our proposed development will be able to take advantage of. And it's a great benefit, and we're planning to tie into it with trail connections. And will also contribute to the public space and enjoyment of the site, even though it's not within our site area. And that's one of the reasons that we had requested to count that towards our public parkland dedication because it is there and it will be a benefit to the community. And we think that should be considered. Next slide, please. So this is looking at the, and the proposed masonry fencing is something staff is concerned about. They wanted to increase the masonry fencing around the east and west sides of our development. And, you know, the reason that we don't feel that that's appropriate is because lots aren't backing up directly to commercial sites. You know, there's a commercial site across the lake, but that's, you know, 200, 300 feet away from those lots. And putting that masonry fence up is, in our opinion, kind of depriving those homeowners that are backing up to the lake from those lake views and the enjoyment in space out behind their home. And we think that the supposed, you know, benefit to privacy by masonry wall is less than, it doesn't balance out with the loss of the enjoyment of those open spaces and those views. So that's why we feel really strongly about preserving the wrought iron fence around the lake as we can. Next slide, please. So this is a slide that we added for the P&amp;Z presentation to talk specifically about the utilities because this is a major concern that we've heard from staff about how the utilities are going to work. We've shown here in different colors the existing utility lines that are already on the site. And something to note, that blue line that goes across there, that's a existing public water line that goes, as you can see, right along underneath the paving and even underneath the parking lot of the town center commercial areas and multifamily areas. And I know that staff is very concerned about having water lines under the paving, but as you can see here, that is often done as a matter of course with commercial multifamily, single-site user developments, where, you know, the public water line may go under the parking lot for a little while or it may go under the paving for a little while. And then what you can't see in this diagram are the individual private water lines that feed off of that main line to provide fresh water to the multifamily to the north and to any other commercial sites in the vicinity. And those private ones also go under the paving. And, you know, they connect to the building wherever they may, but because they're private water lines, the city's not responsible for maintenance of those lines. And we're proposing to do exactly the same thing on the south side with our utility connections. You know, we're proposing to do other utility connections that are not maintained by the city that will tie into this existing public water line that goes already through the site. And thinking about, you know, the difference between, you know, the multifamily on the north and the single family on the south, literally the only difference is on paper that our lots are being subdivided for ownership. But functionally, how it's built on the ground, you still end up with individual private water lines connecting to individual private owners that feed back into this water line. And really, that's how we want to think about this when we talk about, you know, private streets, the PAE, PU, and having privately maintained utilities. A lot of ways, it can be compared to a multifamily development. And how the, you know, the pavement and utilities are maintained really is, it's equitable to compare that to more like a multifamily development. Next slide, please. This is another slide that I think really starts to highlight what seems to be differences between what we're proposing and what the rules are. But if you look at it, we're proposing a 28-foot paving section. That's the exact same paving section that's built in every local street, single-family subdivision with public streets in the city. The paving is standard for local streets. And that's exactly what we're proposing here. The only difference is on a public, you have more public space that's the grass outside the curb. That area is also owned by the city. That's part of the public right-of-way. But that's where the utilities are in a public street. They're underneath that grass. So since we're doing private pavement and privately maintained utility lines, we're taking on the risk of putting those utilities, those pipes underneath the paving. We don't need that extra space in the grass outside the curb because we're taking on the risk, you know, having to pull up the paving to do a repair. And that cost burden will never be on the city. It'll be by the homeowners association. So if you're looking at the cross-section in terms of what you see on the ground, you're still seeing the same pavement curb-to-curb on the ground as you would in a public local street. Next slide. So one, is the slideshow? Martin, I'm not seeing the slideshow anymore.
Jennifer, hi. This is John McDonald with the Community Development Department. Could you maybe go a little faster, cut through some slides?
Mayor, she's got 41 slides queued up, so she gave to us.
Jennifer, just as you know, we're going to get hammered with extensive rain in about 40 minutes. And I'm trying to manage this meeting so we get home people safely. Thank you.
Okay, yes, I'll really quickly wrap up. So, sorry, this was about parking, and staff had some concerns about the parking that we're showing on the site. And just wanted to say that we do think we're showing enough parking because there's existing parking to the north. Next slide. Actually skipped that one, too. So as Martin said, we've proposed some setbacks. I know that they're not what staff is looking for, but with the product that we're doing, the setbacks that we're providing, I think, are sufficient. Next slide, please. This is the new elevations, the renderings that we proposed. We did change materials based on the feedback we heard previously. I understand there's still some contention about that. We are open to feedback. Next slide. Meritage has done a lot of similar developments in the area. Next slide. Ryan, I'm just going to skip right through this. Springbrook Village is another Meritage project where they've done this exact same product in the Houston area, and it's doing very well. Next slide. If you can just, Martin, just kind of shuffle through the next few slides. These are all images of this same product on the ground, what the monumentation looks like, the price points, the elevations. You know, this is a very successful product in the greater Houston area. And you can see, you know, here's some of the interior shots. You know, they're very nicely done inside. There are windows to go to the outside. The rooms are spacious. Now, there's still a lot of enjoyable outdoor space. Oh, sorry, back up real quick. A couple slides back. We do have some rear elevations. I know that was a particular concern for staff. So this is some of the, what the rear elevations look like. These are existing homes, I think, in the Austin area of this exact same type of development. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Curtis. And I apologize for cutting you there, but we just.
Nope, that's fair.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, I'll just say, just to sum up staff's response, that Meritage is a fine builder, and it's not a bad product. We just think this is a bad location for it. There are plenty more suburban locations in Pearland where this would go. But this is an urban, commercial area that needs, and one needs to go here, needs to really support what the Pearland Town Center is and the overall development as a whole in that area. And we just don't think this is a good fit.
So Mayor, the P&amp;Z was negative, and staff's a strong negative as well.
Yeah, so we've had our staff presentation, applicant presentation. We're going to move to the floor for those for or against this proposed request and go to the podium and speak. Second request for those wishing to speak for or against. And third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing none, we'll move to the council for any questions, comments, concerns?
Mayor, I just have a couple of things. One, I think, you know, given some of the comments that were made before when this was part of a JPH, I think I'm fairly confident I know whether or not they can meet the threshold of a conditional use permit. I do have a couple of concerns about some of the staff's presentation that I think warrant some comment. I think this, you know, I don't disagree that staff's recommendation is viable because of the use. I just don't like throwing in a bunch of other conditions that are already built into the property as reasons to deny it. You know, the utility locations, this project was already developed with the intent that it was going to have 25-foot access easements through. And there's other developments within the townhome. So, I mean, we can just stick to, hey, it's not a viable use. Because then you put the applicant in a situation where they've got to put in a lot of work to combat something that was already intended. You know, and I don't think that's what, I don't think there's anything nefarious. I just, you know, this is a unique track. No matter what we put here, it's going to have an issue with access. It's going to have to have an issue with getting utilities to it as you described. It's going to have to connect to the utilities already under the pavement. So I just hate throwing that kind of standard as, hey, this is why we would want to disapprove it and cause the applicant to react and waste a lot of time and money for something that really is not relevant to why we're denying it. I think other than that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Member Kamkar?
Really briefly, I just want to clarify a couple of things to staff. I want to shed some light on real quick. Page six of 96 that you have. There's a comment about the urban-style projects would be fitting PTC, have open space, reduce standards. However, this will be designed, you're saying that this is not fitting. Can you just give a little more color on that?
The idea, the idea with open space in an urban environment is that it's a lot of times it's shared. It's not necessarily active space. It could be plazas or design smaller neighborhood, not neighborhood, but more pocket park sort of thing. And so if you're coming into an area that's already developed at some point, you'd want to show connection and tie to existing amenities. We just didn't feel that this reaches that level.
And the requirement was 900, as you quote in this memo, and they're offering something that carried over 500 feet per lot as part of that open space? Is that correct?
It is correct. They reduced it from 900 square foot, which is our typical, to 525 per lot.
They're asking for a variance of less park, not more.
Correct. They are reducing the amount of open space that would normally be found within a townhome development.
Got it. And then the follow-up paragraph to that, the parkland dedication. If they don't grant parkland dedication, they don't give the acreage, they have to pay a fee. And are they asking to pay the fee or not to pay the fee?
They're asking to not pay the fee by utilizing the existing detention pond and the walking trail that was developed for the Pearland Town Center.
I have a lot of heartburn about that. We work real hard in this city to make it better, and parks are a part of that. And if we're not going to dedicate acreage, you got to pay the fee. And what I'm hearing now is we're not going to pay the fee, and we want some special privileges, and I can't get there. So I support the P&amp;Z's motion not to approve, unless staff's motion, and I will be against.
Questions, comments? So before we, I guess, well, we'll just go ahead and move to the other. So that ends this public hearing. And Member Orlando, would you place new business item number two on the table?
Yeah, I'm waiting to see that come up there, or let me look at it on my paper copy. It was right there. Consideration, possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2000-217. So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Without going into staff report, this will require six votes to approve because of the negative recommendation from Planning and Zoning. Is that correct, Mr. Coker?
That is correct.
Okay. So with that, we've had staff presentation, and we've had council comments and questions.
And if I could just add one thing that I left out on the last one. I previously expressed, I don't think this was brought up, that this was kind of originally zoned as like an entertainment-style thing or like a lifestyle amenity kind of place. And so I don't think this, as was said, fits into that vision either, or the more dense urban vision. So that's all I wanted to add. Thanks.
And I think maybe it's important to think, if we're completely against the use whatsoever, I think it's fair that we say that so that doesn't give them kind of an instruction. If you go back and tweak some things and make some modifications, address a comment that was brought up, address some other staff, they can come back and get a positive review. If we say, hey, no matter what you do, you're probably not going to get the use. I think that's fair. I'm comfortable with the use, but I don't like some of the provisions, which is why I will be a no. But if nobody else wants the use, I think it's fair we give them that feedback.
That's fair.
Agreed.
And I would agree with staff. It's a great product. I don't know if this is the correct location for it.
And to your point, Member Perez, I think that we gave pretty clear direction on kind of some of the changes we wanted to see as a body. And I don't, I mean, from my opinion, I don't know that they really changed much. As a matter of fact, I think with what Member Kamkar pointed out, they maybe gave me more heartburn over this. So I'm okay with the general use, but I think what they brought to us and then subsequently brought back to us is just not the flavor I'm looking to lick tonight. That was a weird thing to say.
Scratch that from the tape. All right. Any other comments, questions? All right. Seeing none. Madam Secretary will call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
No.
Member Carbone?
No.
Member Kamkar?
No.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Little? Member Perez?
No.
Member Owens?
No.
The motion fails seven to zero.
So real quick, folks, we're going to lose Member Orlando. I think he's got to get on the road, and we want him to be safe and get where he needs to get to. Just, we can trudge ahead. We've got, two, three, four. We have five more items that seem to be fairly simple. We could get through them, or we can move them to a special meeting next Monday after our CIP. But if we're here, looks like from radar, Big Edge comes through in about 45 minutes to an hour.
I would say I would rather postpone. I don't know about any of y'all, but I've got stuff in the backyard. It's got to get secured. And I don't have anybody else other than a bunch of kids.
Did we already address item number 11, Mayor? That was the one that we haven't addressed yet.
It would move to a future agenda. And what I would be proposing is we have a CIP workshop next Monday at four. Planning and zoning meets at 6:30 directly behind that. We do CIP to six. We hit this at six, or excuse me, four to six. Do this at a six o'clock meeting, and we can get this complete agenda done and not move anything to the 27th if that occurs. So, you know, and I know people need to, I want people to get home. I want staff to get home tonight. If you've got anything left to do at the house, we have time to do that before we. And we will have some winds, according to National Weather Service, sometime overnight that may reach as much as 50s, in the 50s here. So we do need to secure things around the house if we haven't. With that, I'm hearing, I don't know that I need a motion to adjourn. I'm getting a lot of headbobs. So I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this city council meeting at 8:48. Everybody.
Coming up on Texas Parks and Wildlife.
They are so mysterious. People don't see them.
This year, with the huge influx, people aren't used to seeing this many turtles. We weren't used to seeing this many turtles.
Anytime you see one, getting even a little bit close, your heart starts racing.